Frank's not here. Frank's not here. Frank's not here.
We've, Kirk, I've only got one person that says they will speak on that, so.
I'll call the order. Can y'all hear me?
Uh-uh. They can't hear you, so.
Do I have told this? I guess I have told it. I'll call the order. The October 18th, 2021, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that, we'll have a moment of silence. Our pastor couldn't be here tonight, so we'll have a moment of silence before we start our meeting. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first, the next order of business will be our public comment session, and I have several people signed up to speak. So if you would limit your comments to three minutes, there'll be a red light go off, and then there'll be a buzzer also to let you know when your three minutes is up. If you would just conclude your comments, I'm not going to cut you right off, but if you would just conclude your, you know, in a sentence or two, if you would conclude your comments, and then we can move on to the next speaker. Okay, the first person I have since signed up to speak is Jerry Garner. Welcome, Mr. Garner.
This is Star. Good evening, Star. I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the attending other county. Can I remove this?
Yeah, go ahead. And if you would, just make sure you, I mean, I should have told you all too, to please make sure you're speaking to the microphone. There you go. You can pull it up or whatever you need to do.
I know, right?
And there's some sanitizer there if you want to use that.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the other attending county commissioners for the opportunity to express our concerns and grievances this evening. My name is Jerry Garner. I'm a resident of Dogwood Lakes, private homeowners community located on Trilakes Road, or Trilakes Drive, adjacent to Jonathan Creek, just off of Highway 276, in the vicinity of the Jonathan Creek Fire Department and I-40. The concern we would like to present tonight to the Board of Commissioners is the illegal, life-threatening, and destructive congregations of dozens of homeless people who have established permanent residence across Jonathan Creek from Dogwood Lakes. This compound, if you will, is located directly across from Old Pathwood Baptist Church and on Bean Town Road, and directly on the side of Jonathan Creek. This consistently increasing group of people have erected makeshift shelters, tents, campers, tarps, et cetera, directly on the side of Jonathan Creek with no established sewage system, no potable water whatsoever, and no permanently established electricity. They grow in size daily, and they continue to destroy the property and natural resources of Haywood County. They discharge firearms at all times of the night. They're loud, boisterous, and use profanity to the point that it disturbs our residents in Dogwood. They burn something every night that emits a toxic, acrid chemical smell that we think could potentially be harmful to our, to our children and our families. They cut down the trees all hours of the day and night, and they dispute, they dispose of the human waste into Jonathan Creek. And I actually have a video on my phone of them pushing their waste and waste products down the creek with sticks. And they're actually gagging while doing this. They've pointed red light sensors or red light weapons lasers at our residents and their children in broad daylight as a method of intimidation. The Sheriff's Department's been called out there several times. The fire department's responded several times. And we're just asking you to, to just, I'll just move on since that's flashing. Just use your powers that are granted to you, use whatever resources that you have available to immediately address this illegal, life-threatening situation that we're confronted with every day, and advocate to make this illegal anywhere in Haywood County. We're specifically asking you that you immediately dismantle this group of people from this specific location permanently. Again, I thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman, and the opportunity to present our grievance tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garner. Are these people here with you?
They are all residents of Dogwood.
I'm going to do something I usually don't do. We have our county attorney here, and we've been working on this, and I want him to update, since y'all are here, I want him to go ahead and have him update y'all on what we've been doing and what, where we're at in that process. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property that we're talking about is located on Bean Town Road. The street address that we use, because there's not a 911 address for it, is the, is the house that's across Bean Town Road on a little road called Pinto Place. It's 52 Pinto Place, 28785. This is an area that has been a subject of considerable interest by the county regulatory authorities. I'm going to, I did a summary and a timeline for the participation by county government in this problem, and I'll make that available to the members shortly. The most important ones are this year, the, in, in April of, on April 30th of this year, the inspections department sent a notice of violation to the property owner here, a woman named Lucas, L-U-K-A-S, of seven violations of the state building code and county ordinances for this property. These included maintaining improper electrical connections that in, at one time, they had an extension cord that ran across the state highway, on top of the state highway, and ran over to the, to the site where, where this property is. The, then they ran just one extension cord duct taped to another between a variety of ramshackle makeshift habitations. Anyway, in April, the inspections department sent that notice of violation to them, required, gave them 15 days to correct the violation as required by state law. They didn't make those corrections. We issued in June the 30th, we issued an administrative inspection warrant, which is like a search warrant except for a, for a civil process. And I went out there with members of the Sheriff's Department, the Building Inspection Department, the Planning Department, and the Health Department, all of whom had a information about violations on this site. We completed that inspection without any interference. We interviewed some of the people who were living there. We took 100 photographs of the, of the conditions. And on July 21 of this year, I filed a civil lawsuit on behalf of the county seeking a mandatory and prohibitory injunction for this site to prohibit maintaining any of these conditions because they violate every kind of state building code and development code, our floodplain ordinance. It violated five different jurisdictional situations in the county. Anyway, filed that lawsuit on July 21. The defendant was served on July 26. Defendant did not appear after 30 days, and in September, the clerk issued a notice of entry of default in the case. At the next available Superior Court session, which was held 27 September, I appeared along with the county environmental health supervisor, and we presented evidence about the conditions there, put into evidence 100 color photographs, put into evidence the, the notice of violations that we've just talked about. And the defendant did not appear. Doesn't make any difference. They'd been served, and therefore, whether they appeared or not made no legal difference. In any case, the judge issued a two-pronged injunction. The first prong is what's called a prohibitory injunction, and that prohibits the allowance or the maintenance of any of these violations on this property after 30 days from the date of the, of the order. The order was entered on 27 September, so on October 27th, that would be the 30th day, and all of these conditions will have to be ameliorated. The, what's, the, the actual things that have to be done is the removal of all of the travel trailers, tents. It's a storage unit being used as a residence there, and the discharge of all these un, unapproved electrical connections and, and sewer and lack of water connections for the entire site. That has to be done, and the deadline is, is October the 27th at noon. The judge issued another order at that same time requiring within 14 days of the date of the order, which that date, that 14th deadline was like October 11th or 12th, required the removal immediately of the electrical connections that were running from the house, apparently in some jury-rigged fashion, to this site. And also directed the inspections department, if this disconnection wasn't undertaken within those 14 days, that the inspections department could require the electric service provider at that location, which is Haywood Electric Membership Corp., to disconnect electricity to the house. That would cut off the power that was being illegally diverted across the, across to these sites. So I just got back on this today. I haven't checked with our inspections department as to whether or not the electricity's been cut off or not. I don't know, but the deadline for the complete removal of all of these conditions is, is October 27th at noon. So this is, this has been a matter of considerable concern to county government at, at the level of the Health Department and all of the, the conditions that have been described by the, by the folks across the creek. They're on the other side of Jonathan Creek from this site, and all those conditions were found to have, to have been occurred, and, and we documented them, and we brought the lawsuit, and we've got the judge's order issued. Now, what happens if the corrections are not made? That becomes a very serious matter of enforcement, but the, the simple answer is that the courts with the assistance of the Sheriff's Department can enforce the orders of the court, and they can hold people who interfere with that in contempt. And I don't presume what the judge would do in a situation like this, but it's not uncommon in a situation like this for those persons who defy a judge's injunctive order to be held in contempt of court and subject to incarceration until they purge themselves of that contempt. So those issues, the enforcement of it still is to be finished, okay? The, the electric cutoff, I don't know, I haven't been following that as to whether that's been finished or not, but the electric cutoff needs to have been done four or five days ago because the, the judge judged that an immediate hazard. So that's, does, does that help in understanding that the county's not been?
It does, sir, and I, it does, sir, and I do appreciate the explanation, especially for all of our residents. I mean, if I may say that just in the past, in the past week, they have now erected a wooden barrier in the road right of way on Bean Town Road, and they're continuing to build that. They cut down all the trees. A lumber company came and picked up the trees that they sold to the lumber company. So this is, this is continuing to grow. The sewage is still being deposited into Jonathan Creek. It's going down to the RV parks, all the way down to the national park. I think, I think we've made our point. We understand that you, that you have a good grasp and understanding of it, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I have had contact from church, from the church right across the street, and they're, they're real concerned. They've had a lot of issues also. So they kind of got me started on this, and then we've been progressing since then. And we'll, you know, I, I want us to enforce it as much as we can, you know? So maybe the sheriff will be out there at 12 o'clock on October 27th to see what's done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our next person to sign up to speak is Brandon Rafe Davis. Welcome, Rafe.
Thank you, guys. Good to see y'all. Rafe Davis, I live in Clyde in Haywood County, and I want to talk about vaccines for a few minutes. And what I'm going to say, I won't, I challenge anybody to, I'd love to be wrong. I'd love to debate. I'd love to have a call from anybody, and we can discuss my information here. Love to be wrong. A little over a month ago, on August 12th, 2021, the FDA released new warnings on the three major COVID-19 vaccines. The Johnson &amp; Johnson warning states it causes blood clots and Guillain-Barre syndrome or paralysis. The Moderna and Pfizer warnings now include myocarditis, heart muscle inflammation, and pericarditis, inflammation of the heart lining. These are extremely serious side effects that are maiming and killing people daily. How could anyone consider mandating these shots knowing these risks? Furthermore, according to the CDC, no one is considered fully vaccinated with a COVID vaccine until after 14 days of their final dose. Also, according to the CDC VAERS website, there's now been 16,000 deaths, over 500,000 adverse reactions, 43,000 life-threatening injuries, and 8,000 Bell's pauses. 60% of these victims experienced an onset of these symptoms within only two days. Therefore, all these reported vaccine reactions and deaths are considered to have occurred in unvaccinated people, according to the CDC's own rules. Knowing this along with the fact that the vaccine makers are hand-in-hand with the CDC in many ways, it's no wonder they care not what they put in our shots. These shots include aborted fetal cells, cocker spaniel cells, monkey kidney cells, hamster cells, human cancer tumor cells, cow's blood, and pig viruses. It's also very important to remember, all vaccine makers in America have legal immunity. The only immunity we're getting is legal immunity for the vaccine makers. Check it out. Call me. I'd love to discuss it with anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafe. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Our next person to sign up to speak is Melanie Davis, or Melinda Davis, I'm sorry. Welcome, Melinda.
Good evening. Thank you. I'll use Rafe's time to segue into mine, which is very similar. And to speak to the vaccine, the swine flu vaccine in the 70s was pulled after 25 deaths, just as, as a note to, to speak on what he spoke about. So I'll take this time to read into record some ingredients that are listed in our current U.S. vaccine supply, and you all received an email from Rafe with this list. These are verified with a PubMed ID number per the CDC. And keep in mind also that the current recommended childhood vaccination schedule is between 73 and 93 injections. I don't think any of us would drink antifreeze or any other harmful chemicals, so I'm not sure why we want to mandate these to be injected into our body. A549 is a human lung carcinoma cell line used in adenovirus, tested for use in the COVID-19 vaccine, and used to develop the COVID PCR test. BV DV is a bovine viral diarrhea virus from serum-fed to continuous cell lines for vaccine production. CCL is a continuous cell line replicating cells made from aborted human monkey canine camp, cancer, hamster, and human cancer tumors. CHO is a Chinese hamster ovary cell line used in the production of the hepatitis V vaccine. CJDBSE is Creutzfeldt-Jacob disease, bovine spongiform encephalopathy, mad cow disease that is found in 1 in 7 Alzheimer's cases. CMR197 is a diptheria toxin, and it is used in the pneumonia vaccine, Prevnar 13, and the meningococcal vaccine. The DTAP, Diptheria Tetanus and Portussis vaccine, has adverse events listed in their package insert, including autism, encephalopathy, and SIDS. H-EK293 is human aborted fetal kidney cell lines used in viral vaccines, including influenza vaccine and the new COVID vaccine. Gila cells is human cervical cancer cell line is used in production of the polio and the HPV vaccine production. HPV16 is a cervical epidermoid carcinoma cell line found in the HPV vaccine. Thank you for your time, and I just want to say, my body, my choice, and I hope you all fight for that right as much as we are.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Our next person to sign up to speak is Kay Miller. Welcome, Kay.
Thank you. It's a privilege and an honor to be here to talk once again about liberty, and liberty is in jeopardy. We continue in this crazy exercise of compliance and control, and it's worsening every day. First, we were told, shelter in place, just two weeks, that's all. Then we were told masks don't work, and then we were told, no, no, masks do work, so wear one. Then mandates on masks kicked in. When that didn't stop the virus, then we were told the panacea would come in the vaccine form. And so the, the mandates have begun on the vaccines. I have a niece who lives in Australia. If you hadn't seen what's going on in Australia between those who have had the vaccine and those who haven't, I suggest you search that out. It's horrifying. You cannot comply your way out of tyranny. Now I'm hearing about FEMA camps. That's the latest, greatest topic, 35 of them between Bryson City and Asheville by January of 2022. And I was told yesterday that this has begun in a county west of Haywood and west of Jackson. So my two questions I have are, why are these FEMA camps being built? And why haven't you shared this with us about FEMA camps? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kay. Our next person to sign up to speak is Janet Presson. Welcome, Janet.
Good evening. For the past couple of years, we've all been dealing with the COVID pandemic, and while we didn't know much about the virus when it began, we know quite a bit now. I'm calling out our Health Department for doing a poor job of keeping us informed with the truth. As a taxpayer, I'm not okay with the lies, mistruths, and lies of omission. Not all of it is their fault as they're being fed a steady stream of this crap from the CDC, Dr. Fauci, President Biden, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. However, they need to use their critical thinking skills and do better. First, we're still being scared to death with the constant barrage of local news and opinion pieces that make it sound like we're all doomed unless we get vaccinated. Those magic vaccines will keep everyone from getting COVID, except that they don't. Why are folks who get the virus after the vaccine called breakthrough cases instead of just plain vaccine failure? Why did the CDC over the past year change their definitions of vaccine and vaccination? They're no longer saying vaccines prevent illness, but now provide protection against. That's a big difference. The CDC also keeps changing the definition of who is vaccinated. We were first told if you receive one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson or two doses of Pfizer or Moderna that you're fully vaccinated. However, now, if it's been more than six months since you received your last dose, you're considered unvaccinated. Or if you've received your second or third dose, but it hasn't been 14 days, you're considered unvaccinated. You know, according to me, if you've had zero vaccines, you're unvaccinated, but that is not at all what we're doing now. According to the Haywood County website, we've had 139 deaths from or with COVID. How many of those were before vaccines were available? How many have been since the vaccines were available? And of those, how many are being called unvaccinated? Of those, how many have had zero COVID vaccines? And how many were fully vaccinated but were past the six months since the last dose? Or within the two-weeks window since the last dose but still called unvaccinated? Also, why aren't we hearing about those who have been injured or killed by the COVID vaccine in Haywood County? I don't hang with a predominantly vaccinated crowd, but I know plenty who have received their doses. I know several who have had serious injuries, including one who ended up in the ICU here at Haywood. We're not hearing about any of that. And again, we don't need their personal information, but we need to recognize vaccines do injure and kill. I mean, that's a fact. A report published in Toxicology Reports earlier this year, looking only at infant vaccines, found that, they were looking at 2,605 deaths reported to VAERS, 58% clustered within three days post-vaccine, and 78% clustered within seven days. Has anyone looked at whether or not any of our 139 COVID deaths have actually been vaccine deaths? Of course not, and if so, they would never be reported as such because that would contribute to vaccine hesitancy, and we don't want that. Final points, a couple of months ago, when it was reported that COVID vaccines are now FDA-approved and no longer experimental, that approval was only for the corminity version, which is not available anywhere in the U.S. Y'all are still getting experimental vaccines. You cannot get the FDA-approved one yet in this country. Also, we have plenty of research now showing the impact of vitamin D levels, diet nutrition, exercise, et cetera. We need our Health Department to be sharing this and encouraging people to take back control of their health. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for coming out. Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? I don't, that's all I have signed up to speak. Okay, seeing the one I'll close the public comment session. I'll move on to constituent concerns. Tommy, can I start with you?
I just had a few I got with county manager about, lots, lots of questions still surrounding some storm cleanup in Crusoe and pickup, and I think one of the key questions was when that pickup date will conclude, and that's somewhere up around Thanksgiving, I think is what she told me. I have, folks will have right up until Thanksgiving to get their, their stuff up to the road so it can be picked up, and then that, that contract will be complete. Is that correct, Brian?
That will be the initial phase. We're working with state EM and FEMA to get approval to pick up more than we have so far. If that comes through, we'll probably extend the contract, but getting your debris out to the public right away or as close to it as you can get will wrap up about Thanksgiving.
Yep. Is there anything you can speak to the folks about, about pickup on private property? Have you heard anything lately on that?
We, we've had a couple of conversations. We're working to, we know it's critical to the public. We're working in that direction, but we need to get more concrete details from FEMA on what is allowable so we make sure that we get reimbursed. We want to pick it up, but we also want to protect ourselves financially.
Okay, Kirk.
I don't have any.
Anything to?
Same thing. I've been in touch with Bryant several times about the debris pickup, particularly in Clyde, and we did see some improvement. Some of that has been picked up. There was a large, a large place there near the school, and that's been remedied, but there's still some concerns there, so. I appreciate you staying. there's still some concerns there, so I appreciate you staying on top of that.
Okay. Yeah, I do appreciate you, Bryant, you and the staff's work on this because it's been, it's really been overwhelming what all y'all, y'all have. Seems like every time I call you, you're in a meeting with FEMA or about to have a meeting with FEMA, or you just got finished with one, so. And then we get, we get so much information from, from the staff that FEMA gives to us. So anyway, but in as far as FEMA trailers, do you know anything about that or what, what Kay was talking about? Is it camps, FEMA camps? I've, I've not, okay.
That was a new one on me.
I don't know anything about that, so that's a, that's a new one on me there, so, okay. Just want to make sure you didn't know something I didn't know because you talk to them every day. Okay. Okay. Our next order of business is administration agency reports presentations, and we have Joey Webb here, Information Technology Director, and he's going to give us an update on the
Good evening.
Good evening, Joey.
I see quite a few items on the agenda, so I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to share a few things with you that are happening in the IT department. Our theme this year is innovation, and looking at innovation, we looked at, at the county when an organization's been around for two-hundred-and-thirteen years, it's easy just to kind of keep doing things the same way we always have. And in some cases, that works really well. In other cases, however, as technology improves, it's always a good idea to go back and look at your processes and your practices and make sure we're doing things as effectively and efficiently as possible. With that in mind, we're focusing on continuous process improvement across the county. We started by looking inward. IT is often overrun by work orders, and in the past, a lower priority issue could take days or weeks to be resolved. By optimizing our internal processes, we're excited to announce that the open work order QNIT has been reduced by two-hundred-and-fifty percent in the last three months alone, and most work orders are now being completed within twenty-four hours. We're also conducting investment assessments on all of our major software packages to ensure we're using them to their maximum capabilities and to reduce redundancies. For example, we're working with the finance department and our Munis software. One process change that we're currently working on is expected to save nearly two-hundred hours of staff time, equating annually to about five thousand dollars. And that's just one process in one software application. We have over a hundred applications that we're going to be reviewing and looking at processes with. So we feel confident that we'll see great results going through those, those applications. The IT department maintains a twelve-person computer lab that we've not been able to use during the pandemic to actually train county employees or not be able to use it quite in the ways we have in the past. So one of the common questions we get is, when are you going to start training the users again? Because of course, the more they know about their computers and about their software, the more efficient they can be in their jobs. So we're starting to work right now on doing some virtual training and a little bit of hybrid stuff where we can do some socially-distanced classes in the training lab, but also do some classes virtually for those that can't be there in person. And hopefully, that will be moving here within the next couple of months. Finally, we've started renegotiating some of our communication contracts. We're currently in the process of moving our cellular contract from Verizon over to FirstNet. FirstNet's a federal government system that's currently managed by AT&amp;T. It operates on a separate frequency than what your average consumer cell phones do, and that gives you, it ensures that first responders and government get priority on cellular service during times of disaster or times of congestion. They also have a fleet of deployable resources, which can, we can request for disasters, large-scale events like Friday's ballgame. They even have drones and blimps that can be requested for help with searches in the parklands where we don't currently have cellphone service. So that's a pretty exciting thing that they have. You may have noticed, we got to try out one of their portable towers in Crusoe during the first few days after the flood. They brought a portable tower up and gave us some cellphone service and some Wi-Fi service as we were waiting to get the other towers back up and, and running consistently. So this change will actually reduce our communication costs by over twenty thousand dollars annually. And of course, saving the best news for last, with all these initiatives combined, we hope to save nearly seventy-five thousand dollars this fiscal year. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I just wanted to, to give you a heads up on some of those things we're working on.
Thank you, Joey. Anybody have any questions? I do appreciate the savings that you're, you know, that you're going through all these programs to make sure that we have, and it sounds like you've already found quite a bit, so we appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Joey? Okay. You IT guys, we just can't figure you out. Appreciate it, Joey. Okay, our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda, and I have two items I need to add to the consent agenda. Item number eight was, which is to request approval of the twenty-twenty-two personal property depreciation schedule. Is that correct? So I need a motion to add that. Do I need to suspend the rules? Okay.
I'm making a motion to add that.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose. Okay. Okay, the next one, I also need to add a closed session. GS forty, GS one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three, attorney-client privilege. I need a motion to add the closed session. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you don't want to oppose? Okay. Okay, our next order of business will be the consent agenda. Does any commissioner have any questions about the eight items on the consent agenda? And the eighth item would be the request approval of the twenty-twenty-two personal property depreciation schedule.
On this depreciation schedule, were there any changes made to the previous year? No changes? Okay. Okay, so the only change was to, to the junk vehicles went down to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so.
Okay. Thanks for repeating that, Kirk. Okay, is there any other questions on it? I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. The first item is to request approval of amendment to the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority bylaws. We have Lynn Collins here, our TDA director. Welcome, Lynn.
Good evening. Thank you. Just two quick items here. The first is amendments to the TDA bylaws. One is amended language for the executive committee stating that the executive committee shall consist of five members. Four members shall be appointed by position to include the TDA chairman, vice chairman, ex officio county economic development director, and the ex officio county finance director, and then one TDA member-at-large from the board.
Okay.
And then also, the executive committee will serve as the nominating committee for the TDA officer nominations.
Okay. Kirk, you're on that board. Did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, we reviewed these changes to the bylaws or these, this amended language, and it was largely due to the lack of the ability to have people to fill these seats and so, and also the type of representation that we have on that board, and so that's why these changes are being recommended.
Okay.
And, and the board has approved.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Jennifer, Tommy? Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, she knows. Okay, number two is to request approval of amendment to the composition of the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority one percent zip code subcommittee. Go ahead, Lynn.
If you recall, when we adopted the additional one percent, we created subcommittees for each zip code, and over the years, as we have seen how that worked or didn't work, we have done some revisions, and so now I'm back for some additional revisions. One is, a couple of things here at the very beginning where it says creation and by resolution, those are just things to clean up the, the document. Under the composition and appointment of members, we have found in some zip code areas that they just appoint sort of maybe whoever's willing to serve. It may be somebody who doesn't know anything about tourism or isn't related to tourism. And so the board feels very strongly that the people who should be making recommendations on how this one percent is funded should be tourism-related somehow, some way, whether they are a tourism-related business, whether they own or manage an accommodation or whatever. So all of the zip codes now have three-member subcommittees. One member will be a TDA board member from that zip code, so that's not changing. The other, one member will be a representative of the short-term rental accommodations industry, an owner or manager from within the appropriate zip code and recommended by the town alderman of that zip code. So short-term rental can be any type of accommodation that's rented for ninety days or less. It doesn't mean necessarily vacation rental. It can be a hotel, you're a B and B, or a cottage, cabin, whatever. And then one member will be a, an owner or manager of a tourism-related business or short-term rental accommodations industry within the zip code. So if, in the case of some of the zip codes, you may have trouble getting to accommodations people, but you could get somebody who is in the tourism business, maybe owns a restaurant or maybe they have a retail establishment or something that caters to the tourism industry, so that would fit the bill as well. And then, of course, in Lake June Luska, they're totally different, so they actually cannot adhere to these same guidelines because of the way they're set up. So, I mean, they have one general manager for their accommodations. They have, you know, so theirs is a little bit different. So it would be left up to them to determine who the other two members of their subcommittee would be by their executive management. Obviously, one will be their representative board member that's on the TDA, but then they would have two other people from within that zip code who they feel is a good fit for the subcommittee position.
Okay. And it looks like you're really kind of keeping up with the changes in your industry by doing this, so.
Yes.
Adding the short-term rental accommodations.
Right.
Because we used to never have those.
And then the other item we have on here is if they're unable to fulfill the requirements for filling those positions, that a TDA board member could be assigned to fill an available seat. And that, that just helps to make sure that you've got at least three people, that odd number, who are looking at the applications and making the recommendations on that funding back to the TDA board.
Okay. Kirk, did you have any comments on that?
Just the bylaws committee had reviewed this and, and recommended these changes, and another need for us to make sure we had enough people to fill the one percent, the seats on the one percent committee, because on some of the committees, we had a difficult time getting all the seats filled.
Yeah, you're right. We, we do sometimes, yeah. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Any questions? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of the regular agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you don't want to oppose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, our next order of business, number three of the regular agenda, is to request approval of a budget amendment from Mountain Projects for two-hundred thousand dollars to appropriate the fund balance to the Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership and Affordable Housing Division of Mountain Projects to establish a revolving development fund for the construction of affordable homes. We have our vice chair of Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership, Judy Dykes, Mountain Projects Executive Director, Patsy Davis, and county manager Bryant Morehead. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Judy Dykes, and as you said, I'm the vice chair of the Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership, which is the Affordable Housing Division of Mountain Projects. Mountain Project is a nonprofit that for fifty-six years has worked tirelessly to support the lives of residents in western North Carolina, principally those in Haywood and Jackson Counties. Whenever the community has needed assistance meeting a need, Mountain Projects has been there. They might not have had enough personnel or the financial resources at the time, but they somehow get it done. Be it the county's need for a head start program, someone to administer section eight vouchers, or a transit system to help people travel to doctor's appointments, or someone to help develop the Barefoot subdivision built after the two-thousand-and-four floods, Mountain Projects has always been there. Five years ago, Patsy Davis, the executive director of Mountain Projects, served as the co-chair of a task force commissioned by this board to assess the need for affordable housing. The document prepared by that task force clearly illustrated the lack of affordable housing and outlined steps that needed to be taken. If those facts and statistics were not enough, the recent flooding in Crusoe and Canton certainly points to the need for more affordable housing. Further, in the current environment, where it's hard to hire and retain teachers, healthcare workers, law enforcement, et cetera, if you can't offer a new hire, a housing situation they can afford, then they'll accept a position elsewhere. Over two years ago, Patsy asked a few volunteers, myself, Don McGowan, and my husband, to help form an affordable housing division. So we did. We raised three-hundred thousand from family and friends, hired a construction manager and executive director, established a housing counseling center, which provides invaluable guidance and support for those on the path of the American dream of home ownership. We've also applied for and received several small grants and over eight-hundred thousand from the Dogwood Foundation. Don even spearheaded and helped form a housing consortium between six counties and twelve towns, which will provide grants for affordable housing projects in our region. We have purchased three separate parcels of land, two in Haywood County and one in Jackson County, which can support over fifty homes between them. We've reached a point now, though, where we need help. The existing shortfall of affordable workforce homes is immense, exacerbated by the additional families in need who are displaced by the flooding. It has become a critical situation. Today, we're asking for two-hundred thousand in funding, which will be placed in a revolving construction fund to be used to build homes. These homes will be sold, and that money then returned to the fund, which will then be used to construct another home and so on. Ultimately, we want to raise one million dollars for this revolving fund. Such capital would permit the building of four homes at a time. In closing, I ask that you approve this request for two-hundred thousand. Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership very much wants to be a part of the future solution for affordable housing in our beautiful mountain community.
Thank you. Is that, is anyone else going to speak? Okay. Did you want to say something, Brian?
I, I think we've talked about this since we sold the hospital.
Yeah.
Sorry. I think we've talked about this since we sold the hospital, that we wanted to put the funds to work. This is the plan that the Housing Partnership's developed. I know Patsy's here. She's the, the housing expert. If you want to ask Kirk some questions.
Okay. And I will say that you, you folks have got, I think, two parcels of property that were, that you're working on in Haywood County, and then also, there's another parcel possibly coming, that may come into play also, that's a lot bigger and more rural, but a lot of people that lost their homes in the rural area, so. So I think, and two, so you've raised three-hundred thousand from family and friends. Have you gotten other grants?
Other than from Dogwood?
Yeah, no, so you did get one from Dogwood?
Oh, yes, we have over, got, received a grant of over eight-hundred thousand from Dogwood.
Okay, so you've had eight-hundred thousand from Dogwood, three-hundred thousand from friends and family. I think we even attended a, was that a fundraiser maybe, or a?
It was a thank you to our.
Thank you to the, yeah, to the. Thank you to the, yeah, to the people that had. So there's a lot of people in the community that have given their own funds to make sure that you guys, and I know you'll succeed, so, okay. Does anybody have?
I just think this is a good idea, something we've been talking about if we want to take action to have affordable housing or some affordable housing in Haywood County, which is difficult right now. This is the effort to get that accomplished. I wanted to follow up on Bryant's comment to make sure we clarify. That's the sale of the old hospital. This has nothing to do with the funds from the new hospital. This is the sale of the old hospital, those funds, so.
Yeah.
Just to not get that confused. It's a separate part of money.
That's true. That's true, yeah. That's a good point. Okay. Does anybody have any?
And so just to be clear, the $200,000 allows four people to participate in the program, and then it's replenished over time, so it's not just a one shot for four people. It will continue to grow and help other people.
Ultimately, we're hoping that we'll have a million dollars, that we'll raise a million dollars for this fund, but this is the start of the fund, and we will use that money to build a home and then sell the home, and it'll just be a legacy.
Sure. I was at that same program that Kirk and Kevin were at.
That's right.
And I was very impressed with those young ladies that presented and how the program works, so I think it's got great merit and potential.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the ladies was a success story, a success story, so that was great, yeah. You got anything, Tom? Okay, okay. Okay, I don't hear any other discussion. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. Okay, your next item is number four, is the request approval of a resolution amending the Smoky Mountain Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update adopted May 21, 2018. We have our Emergency Management Services Director, Travis Donaldson. Welcome, Travis.
Good afternoon, commissioners. What I've got before you tonight is a resolution adopting the Smoky Mountain Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Little bit of backstory, background on the mitigation plan. It's a regional plan that Haywood County participates in, the western region here. It's a 600-page document that outlines hazards and response to and mitigation measures. What this resolution here tonight brings to the table is being able to include river gauges and rainfall gauges into that plan, so if we have funding sources that we can secure, that opens up those funding streams if we can secure them, just to amend the plan to include these river gauges and rainfall gauges, in short.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? It's definitely needed.
If I understand this correctly, this will help give a better early warning in case of an event that we just incurred back in August. This will enhance our stream gauge monitoring and our warning system and save lives, hopefully, so.
Correct. It opens up funding streams if we can access those funding streams to include these in the plan. And it's a five-year plan, and the meetings actually start for the next revision of that plan next week. So we're going to make sure that we push to get those included in future plans, so we don't have to come back and revisit this.
Okay.
Does state EEM give guidelines on what that plan should say? Is that where those guidelines come from?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item four of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Item number five is to request approval, thank you, Travis. Item number five is to request approval of a budget amendment, community health, public health, $12,280 to appropriate fund balance fiscal year 2021 of unspent funds to fiscal year 2022 to the respective expenditure and revenue accounts that roll forward. And Christian, how are you this tonight?
All right. Good evening. This is for grants that we received in fiscal year 2021, and they do, they don't run quite on a fiscal year, they run more on a calendar year. So we get those funds at the end of the fiscal year, but they're unspent, so we just need to roll those forward. This is a typical thing, and we have quite a few of those that happen every year. And this is for the community health and public health grants, for a total of $12,280 that we'll be taking from fund balance if approved.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the rollover? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item five of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone want to oppose? It's unanimous. Okay, our next item is item six. Christian, you're on it too. Request approval of a budget amendment, social services, for $281,563 to appropriate fund balance fiscal year 2021, unspent funds to fiscal year 2022 to the respective expenditure and revenue accounts that roll forward. So it makes sense.
This is the same thing, except most of these are incentive funds that we receive based on performance in child support and adoption incentives. So we get these funds later in the year, but they're not, we don't get them in time to spend them in the current fiscal year, so we have to roll them over.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions on that? That was for what was that again?
Incentive funds. It's adoption and child support incentive funds that we get.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item six of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Christian. Number seven of the regular agenda is to request approval of budget amendment, information, technology, and communications, $25,000 to appropriate fund balance for the purchase of software licensing and training. We have our IT Director, Joey Webb again. Hey, Joey.
This is just basically a continuation of what I spoke about earlier. We need a little extra money to do some training, to complete some of those efficiencies, and to get a few software licenses to bolster up some of our software to be able to do some of that continual process improvement. So we're asking to do that in order to complete those savings we talked about earlier.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for general?
I don't have any questions. I have comments. One, I appreciate Joey becoming the IT Director and also the improvements that you're attempting to make. I mean, if anybody's been here when the county goes down, better believe you want to make sure you got off the train than you can get, because there's problems all over. So I appreciate you taking on that task, and I'm sure that this is going to be used wisely.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, and Kirk can probably allude to this too. You know, 10 years ago, or maybe 15 years ago, I came up to the courthouse to do deep research and go to the landlord's office. I don't have to do any of that anymore, but when it's down, it's like, I call up here whining because it's down. So, and usually it's not us, it's whoever our vendor is, so. But all the training we can get, the better, then that way we can, you know, but it's always resolved quickly and everything, so. But it's a changing world, you know, and just in what I do. I record a plat from my office, and I never come up here. The registered deeds are like, we never see you anymore, Kevin, and I just don't have to come up there. I rarely have to go up there. So it's a new world, and this is really a big part of it. Does anybody have? I'm sorry. I just, I just thought of that when I was just like, man, we don't have to do a lot of this anymore. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve item seven of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Joey. Appreciate all your hard work too, Joey. Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and the first one is to request approval of the reappointment of David Clement as Haywood County Jury Commissioner for the 2022-2023 by, by EEM? Is that it?
By EEM, yeah.
By EEM Commissioner Kirk Patrick.
Yeah, that is. We did this two years ago, I believe, and David Clement was the person we appointed. The county commissioners are responsible for appointing one of three jury commissioners to review the pool of jurors throughout the county, to determine if anyone's deceased, if they've moved, and that kind of thing. So this is what David will be doing if we reappoint him, just reviewing the jury list with the other two jury commissioners. And the clerk called and asked if this be placed on the calendar to have Mr. Clement reapproved or reappointed, and we needed to do it tonight because it ends this month.
Okay, good.
So with that, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item two is to request approval of appointments, two at-large positions by vote and one at-large farmer position by vote. There are four commissioner-appointed positions currently vacant on the Haywood County Planning Board. Two of the positions are regular at-large positions, and two are active farmers at large. And we only have had one active farmer apply. So any vacancies not resolved by this evening's vote will be reported on the county website under latest news. So Bryant is passing out ballots to appoint the two at-large positions and then the farmer position.
And Kevin, one of these is a three-year term and one of these is a one-year term, right? The at-large, one's fulfilling a non-expired term? And one's beginning a three-year term?
Yeah, that's correct. Sorry about that.
Actually, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that when we were interviewing today. And I want to say this about the applicants. Again, we had nine applicants, and any one of those nine applicants could fulfill this job and do a good job for the planning board. I appreciate all the folks that do apply. This is one of the most difficult things that I've ever done as a commissioner, is always these boards. And when you have good applicants and they come out, and we have a lot of people interested in the community, so just wanted to say thank you for that.
Good point.
And also, Kevin, we do have one more position available for a farmer, so if there's any farmers out there, we only, we had two open positions for farmers, only one applicant that was a farmer, and we need one more farmer, so calling all farmers if you want to be on the planning board. We were trying to get some of the folks that were there to see if they did any farming so we could put them on that position, but didn't quite work.
Yeah.
are. How fast they can come back with results determines that.
I'm glad that's not.
That was the wrong thing to say, Brian.
a non-expired term, which ends September 3, 2023, Mr. D. Blake Stanbury. The commissioners have pointed to the at-large position, beginning at the regular beginning time, a three-year term upon appointment, William Townsend Nolan. The commissioners have pointed to the at-large farmer position fulfilling a non-expired term through 8/1922, W. P. Skipper Russell.
Again, thank you for your applications and everyone. Mr. Inslee had to step out for a minute, and I don't believe we have any additional business to accept closed session. Can we vote to go into closed session with three people, or you want to wait a minute, Bryant?
We still have a quorum.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a quorum. Well, I'll move, if that's okay, I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 Attorney Client Privilege. You in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't know if we just did something you can do or not. I don't know if we just did something you can do or not.
We should, we should look at all these things.
That's the chair of the Republican Party.
That's Camille.
Camille. We've returned from closed session. Does anybody have any more business before the board?
No, sir.
Okay. Here, I'll entertain you. The motion, will you adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.